Thank you. I move that the board reconvene into an open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
Could I have a motion to certify?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Whereas the Northumberland County School Board convened into a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification that, to the best of a member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, excuse me, in the closed meeting with this certification that applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for certification?
I certify.
Dr. Curran?
I certify.
Dr. Davis?
I certify.
Ms. O'Beare?
I certify.
Ms. Christopher? Is she online tonight? No. Okay. Now we're going to the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the Closed Meeting Action Items.
Ma'am Chair, I move that the Board approve the MOU for the Excel Intervention and Therapeutic Services as a partnership with NMS, the approval of a Memorandum of Understanding between the Northumberland County Sheriff's Office and the Northumberland County Public School Division, the approval of a Memorandum of Understanding between the Virginia Department of Health and Northumberland County Public Schools, approval for the Memorandum of Understanding between Northumberland County Schools and the Office of Edibology, Division of Pharmacy Services, and the approval for the 2526 school year, the continued use of the Bloom and Thrive ABA Services as presented, and the approval of the DEVERO Student Strength Assessment, K-8 and High School Student Self-Report with Strategies and Invention Packages.
All right, do I have a second for that motion? Dr. Davis, second. Any comments? Vote?
Aye.
Ma'am Chair, I also move that we I'm gonna bunch these all together, approve the following personnel supplements and/or hirings. Becky Branham as the PM Dispatch, Angela Bishop, full-time cafeteria staff position, Robin Jenkins, teacher, paraprofessional, Stephanie Ricks, paraprofessional, Michelle Blumer, paraprofessional, Rosa Packett, paraprofessional, Sylvia Fisher, elementary special education, paraprofessional, Alexandra Hurt, elementary special education, paraprofessional, Amaya Ball, third grade, paraprofessional, Wanda Pomeroy, substitute nurse, Autumn Demerick, substitute nurse, Teresa Bowen, substitute coordinator, Kelsey Colton, substitute coordinator, Eric Jones, varsity assistant football coach, Erica Cook, JV sideline cheer coach, Alicia Thompson, varsity sideline cheer coach, Norma Cotto, varsity cross-country coach, Karis Smith, volunteer basketball, and Jessie Lee, substitute teacher.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.
Ma'am Chair, I also move that we approve the special education supplements, the athletic supplements, the division annual supplements, the NES annual supplements, the NMS annual supplements, the NHS annual supplements, and the TAG annuals supplements as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.
Ma'am Chair, I also move that we accept the following retirements, resignations, Suzette Suzanne Bramall, NES, Kristy Self, NMS, Bonnie Swain, NES, and Shannon O'Beare, School Board Office.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.
That's all I have for this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Curran. We'll now ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented there for the dates of August 11th of 2025? And the approval of the minutes for November 14th, 2025? I mean, I'm sorry, 2024, they were revised. And do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.
All right, and now we'll move on to Presentations.
I'd like to invite Ms. Stacy Hendrickson, our CTE Coordinator and Teacher, to walk us through the CTE Perkins' Long Plan and Budget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this is an annual requirement through the Perkins Grant. So there are various tabs. I don't know if we're able to see the tab portion, but the first tab is going to be the instructions that the CTE Coordinator or Director has to go through to ensure it is completed as required. The second tab includes all certifications and assurances by various members of the CTE hierarchy to include the Board, which is why it's in front of you tonight, as well as the Superintendent. The third tab goes into various schedules. Most of this is a holdover from the prior year. Dr. Burns provided this prior to leaving. There were no drastic changes from previous years. There was an update to the Advisory Board. Our outcomes have obviously changed from year over year, so I worked with our Director, Michelle Gordon, to make sure all of our outcomes are accurate. So we ran the various reports, and that's reflected on one of the tabs. The third tab includes all of the schedules. There's schedules one through eight, seventeen. So those are included as well. Again, no drastic changes year over year, which was submitted last year. We did update the budget and Perkins' funds. Again, not a drastic increase from last year. We are anticipating a spend of $25,000. That is going to include textbooks for the new dual enrollment course. Both the middle school and the high school have a new consumer science classroom, and those had to be equipped this year. We have various certification expenses that we have to provide, and that is pretty much it. Do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you. Questions?
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to the financial reports. We do not have a check register and ACH to approve this evening. We received it late, so we'll have to table that. The expenditure report and revenue and expenditure report is available online for public. And then we can move on to donations. Donations that we have for approval this evening. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Heatsville Lions Club donation of $50 for the NMS art class, Bethany Baptist Church for hygiene kits for the NHS NMS clinic, Sarah Harmon with the Lewisetta Junior Angler Fishing Tournament, $250 for NMS teacher supplies, and the Save Bookdale History, I'm sorry, Book Vale History Organization donated $800 for NMS reading program and the One School, One Book programs. Do I hear a second on that motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Thank you to everyone for those donations. We greatly appreciate it.
Ma'am Chair, if we could just go back to the financial reports for a second?
Yes, sir.
I would like to file a motion that reporting protocols for the Director of Finance in terms of reporting to the School Board and the Board of Supervisors be put in place.
That's your full motion?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have a rationale?
No, I need a second, please.
It's gotta be second first.
I'm sorry. All right, a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, the rationale for it is we haven't had a financial ACH or check register in the last two months since the 26th budget began. Obviously, protocols need to be put in place. This Board needs to be informed of the finances that are being spent out, and we need to keep track of it. I think it's it's imperative, not only for the School Board, but also the Board of Supervisors, to have those protocols in place so that nothing will fall through the loop. I understand that, you know, checks aren't being dispersed because of problems with ACH and other issues. We've had some personnel issues that that, I wouldn't say personnel issues, let me rephrase that. We've had some protocol issues that really needed to be defined, and we can't wait on UHY to come up with protocols so that this Board can be informed, as well as the Board of Supervisors. So I think it's imperative that we go to the Board of Supervisors with this motion tonight. Hopefully, we'll all be in agreement so that we can present it to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration on Thursday.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion, so now vote. Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Dr. Curran. We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you. So I actually am going to invite Mr. Regan up from UHY, who's going to be catching us up on what they've been doing to work with our finances from '25 and where we're moving. Of course, UHY has been assisting us with our finances. Mr. Basie, under the Revenue and Expenditure Report, you will find a spreadsheet. If you could project that for Mr. Regan, so that that would be awesome. All right. Let us know if you need me to put anything else up, okay?
No, it's fine. Again, Jack Regan, R-E-A-G-A-N, UHY. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board this evening. Want to take '25 and '26 separately. Okay? What you have in front of you is an analysis of what is remaining to be closed in fiscal year 2025. This is as of late in the day last Thursday. Okay? There are, I would say, between 10 and 15 checks that are in the process of getting paid right now that are going to be charged to fiscal year '25. All right? After those payments have been made, and we got those processed, and they're almost through the system, what we did, you have a column of disencumbrances there. Those are purchase orders that were for fiscal year '25 that had balances on them that were no longer needed. We paid all the invoices, all the goods and services had been had been rendered, but they were still showing an open balance in the system. So once we got all those invoices through the system for processing, we disencumbered those upwards of, I think, 80 to 90 that were still open. So that is the disencumbrances column. Right? This leaves you with what is in the remaining balance column. That shows by appropriation category how much is left in the 2025 budget to be to be charged, available to be spent. There are four payments that we cannot make as it stands now, because the line, the, excuse me, the appropriation category that that payment needs to be charged against does not have sufficient budget authority for the payment to be made. However, there are other surpluses in other categories that can be used if a transfer is approved from a category with a surplus to a category with a deficit that will allow for those four payments to be made. This is not asking the County Board of Supervi-, or the School Board, or the County Board of Supervisors for any additional money for fiscal '25. There are sufficient funds, just not in the right categories for us to make these last four payments. So what I'm hopeful of is that, believe that in your package tonight, there has been a transfer request for '25 that has been presented to you for your review and approval. I'm hopeful that the Board will take action tonight to approve that so that it can be taken to the County Board on Thursday for their review and approval. Sorry.
Mr. Basie, if you go under the Check Register and ACH Approval, the second file, NUCPA, second quarter, is that appropriation request? I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Regan.
No, that's fine. And, I mean, we could have stayed on, and you've got the, you know, hopefully, the analysis ticks and ties. But what we're requesting is $100,000 transfer from Transportation, a $50,000 transfer from O&M, $25,000 from Building, and $30,000 from Technology, moving 190 into Instruction and 15,000 into Admin and Health. So again, there's no net new money. If you go back to the spreadsheet, you can see that after that transfer, there will be a nominal amount of surplus in Instruction and in Admin and Health. So, you know, based on what we have seen, based on all the discussion that we have had with schools' personnel, there are no other fiscal year '25 invoices to be paid. So we believe that by taking this action this evening, we'll be able to close out '25. And I do want to emphasize, if you go back over to the right, after these payments are made, there will be around a $122,000 surplus that will need to be returned to the County in accordance with Virginia regulations. I will entertain any questions on '25 that folks may have.
Okay, so we have 10 to 15 checks that are getting paid now for 2025. We need to make four additional payments. And as a result of those four additional payments, you're going to need our approval to transfer those funds, as you indicated so eloquently tonight, into those accounts to make those transfers, and then this should close out fiscal year 2025, correct?
Yes, sir. If I may just tweak the order a little bit, we cannot make these four payments absent the appropriations transfer. So I, we don't have an option to be able to make that because there is no funding available to make those payments.
I understand that.
Okay, I just wanted to
So
Thank you.
the schools will then, or the Finance Director will then be transferring 121,911 back to the County. What happens if a bill comes in before September 30th from 2025? When are those funds going to be moved to the County? And
I would like to think that those funds will be moved as a result of the next Board meeting. So I would, what I would propose to do is, once all of this gets done, we get to September 30th, we see no other bills have come in. You know, at your October meeting, we would propose the fund balance reversion, or the surplus reversion at that meeting.
So your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors would be to hold those funds until October to ensure that if those funds are needed to be spent, that they can spend that?
Knowing that we, you know, again, we've had at least half a dozen conversations, email correspondence, other things, trying to surface any 2025 invoices. Based on what I'm doing, you know, based on the analysis, if we get a $2,500 invoice that comes out of the woodwork that needs to get charged to Instruction, we won't have the ability to pay that.
Okay, so if my memory serves me correct, I believe we were going to give them back about $140,000. We're about $20,000 short. I'm sure they're going to ask or want to know, where did that $20,000 come from? That
There was
my comment, too.
There was one invoice for $11,050 for a worker's comp, whereas we were doing the analysis of these final payments. It was actually your staff that identified the fact that there were only three of the four quarterly payments for $11,050 that were on the latest correspondence that we had from that particular vendor. And out of an abundance of caution, we have accrued the additional, that additional quarterly payment that seems like it should be there.
Okay, and then
Does that make sense?
What's that?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me, yeah. So I just want to make sure that the MOE has been paid to the state. Has that check been cut?
We can't pay that check because we don't have the authority, we don't not have the appropriation.
So that's one of the appropriations that we need for the funding to be transferred?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what are the other ones, the four payments?
There is an in-house payment, and there is an underpayment of a tax withholding from the first quarter.
What's that?
It was the 941 for quarter one of 2025. The 941 was submitted correctly, but the payment was made incorrectly.
Okay. Ma'am Chair, my move that we authorize the funds to be transferred, or a recommendation for the Board of Supervisors to authorize the funds to be transferred so that we can close out the check, the budget for 2025, so that we can make those four additional payments.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Vote?
Aye.
Are there any remaining questions on 2025?
No, maybe, kind of. Where are we in your protocols for, we're reaching the end of your contract period here. Where are we on the protocols for the Finance Department and writing writing those protocols down so that we have some kind of game plan?
And let me address that as we're going through '26, as we're making the discussion of '26. I think some of the actions that we've been taking to go through the purchase order process and the payment process, every time we are going through the multiple screens that you have to go through to get a purchase order done, the multiple screens that you have to go through to get a payment made, we're taking a screen capture of the specific menu, the specific item on the menu that we are selecting, dropping that into a Word document so that there is a, for lack of a better way of describing it, a how-to guide that is going to be available for staff once we leave that will show all of those steps. I would like to present that to this Board at the next meeting, so that you guys can see what has been put together. It's a very prudent step for Boards to approve policies and procedures, documents every, at worst, every three years, and any updates annually, but a full evaluation every three years. So I would propose to bring that to you for this next meeting. And we would train up, we would either be here physically, or we'd have everybody on a Zoom call, Teams meeting, whatever, where we're sharing screens with everybody having this protocols document and showing them here are the exact screens that you go through to do all that. Yeah, we're building that as we go along.
Okay.
And I will have, by Friday, for the Superintendent, a timeline that will be followed for all of the Board meetings from here on out of this many days in advance of the Board meeting, a particular monthly ACH report, Electronic Funds Payment Report, Expenditures Report, what will be presented to this Board for your review and approval before it goes to the County Board of Approval. I will have that, based on the motion that was just made and accepted, we'll have that to the Superintendent by Friday, so you can circulate, she can circulate that to this Board for its consideration, to make sure that it's sufficient and meets what you're trying to accomplish with the motion.
So I'd like to just ensure that the three-day time limit that the Board receives business days so that we can review those documents, be taken into consideration.
Absolutely.
I do want to I do, it's bugging me, so I'm going to have to ask you. It might be embarrassing, I don't know. But at the last meeting, when I asked you, you assured me that you were going to have all the checks paid by that Friday, or the purchase orders for all the outstanding balances by that Friday. But here we are, a month later, and there's 10 or 15 checks that are still
Yep.
sitting in limbo for some reason. What happened?
What we have found is that the user roles and permissions that have been set up within the IT system, the ERP system, have resulted in an inconsistent routing of both purchase orders and invoices for approval. There were folks that were somehow included on the approval chain that had no idea that they were included on the approval chain. And as we have been trying to get the final items for '25 out the door, the current items for '26 paid, you know, the next priority that I've got trying to get cleaned up before September 30th is consultation with the Acting Finance Director to make sure that the Acting Finance Director is comfortable with our recommendation for any changes that need to be made to the roles and permissions that have been assigned to users within RDA.
So this is, this is an issue that was identified in 2025 budget that we're going to need protocols for ensure that they are not happening in the '26 budget, because if the protocols aren't in place, then the same mistakes are going to be made in terms of the approval chain for what's going on. So we're now going to be in October, November. You see my rationale here, where I'm going with this.
Is your mic off?
Is it off? Yeah, his mic went off. He's coming with a new one.
I think
It might be the battery. Mr. Basie's bringing
Hold on, Jack, he's coming.
He's bringing you one.
Like I said, I think it's my hot air, that's what it is. You know, I'm hopeful by the end of this month that that will be done, that we can report back to you at the October meeting, that this has all been accomplished.
I hope so.
And I'm going to add, I'd like to add one other thing that we identified as well is And I'm gonna add, I think, add one other thing that we identified as well is you know, there there is system functionality that when a purchase order is entered into the system, if when you enter that purchase order, that it would exceed the appropriations budget for that particular category, that a warning sign, a warning screen comes up and says, you know, you have input something that will create a, a, you know, an excess of appropriation. That's, that control can be figured two different ways. It can be configured as a warning control and allow you to proceed and override it, or it can be configured as an end control and stop you from the transaction. The way that that control is configured at the schools currently is that it is a warning and you are able to override that and continue to process the transaction. My understanding from talking to county personnel is that they turned off that function and made it a hard stop approximately two years ago. I have no understanding or have not pursued why the control is not turned on at the schools. I just know that that will be one of the controls that we recommend to the Acting Finance Director be implemented and, and changed by R D A. So that will prevent that overspending from happening.
Well, tha- that brings another question. Um, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they had to approve the um I T budget, I think it was, I forget what.
There, there was a modification, yes, for.
Yeah, technology, the technology budget because of the um, the timeframe. So obviously, if we're budgeting on a quarterly basis, um, that would be a problem. Um, because we'd be over budget for that quarter and that first quarter uh for the whole entire year. So what is being put in place to rectify that situation?
Right, so we have gone through the fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five payments that have been made to try and identify other large discrete payments that were made in, say, period one that benefit the rest of the year. We did our analysis based on uh vendor payments of twenty-five thousand dollars or greater. And outside of that one payment, uh, we've not been able to identify any other payments that seem like what will happen is if I pay it in quarter two and it benefits me in quarter three, quarter four, and quarter one, that I need to what I'll say, you know, get that quarter three and quarter four appropriation brought into quarter two so that I'm not robbing Peter to pay Paul.
So how are the Board of Supervisors gonna be made aware that we have those payments? So next year, twenty-six budget, twenty-seven budget, that the money is gonna be appropriated appropriately in the quarters. So that's a protocol that, that, this whole thing is based on protocols. And I think a lot of the things that the, the year and a half ride that we've been on are because of lack of protocols or procedures.
I agree completely.
So.
One of the things that I would, what, what we have, the tool that we are going to be able to share um, is, you know, a monthly cash flows analysis. We have broken out based on the twenty-four and twenty-five check registers, payments by vendors that occurred by month. So you can see when all those are and as you're developing the two thousand and twenty-seven budget, you've gotta have two questions answered. How much do I need and when do I need it? So we've been very good, I think, about developing overall the budget of here's the annual budget that I need. But once now we're in quarterly appropriations, what we have to be able to do in that annual appropriation piece is to say, here's how much we need in Q one, here's how much we need in Q two, here's how much we need in Q three, and here's how much we need in Q four. And that's what we have done actually with the second quarter appropriation, which is another item that you have in front of you for review and approval this evening. Um, is that we have incorporated into that request the fact that the board has already provided us with the second quarter appropriation for that payment, that hundred and thirty thousand dollar payment or so. Uh, they gave that to us in the first quarter. So we don't need to ask for that money again. So the appropriation request that you have in front of you this evening is basically the same appropriation request as was appropriated for quarter one, except for technology, we've taken out thirty-two thousand dollars because that thirty-two thousand dollars got given to the schools as part of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand that was approved in July. I hope that made sense.
It does. I got one last question and I'll make that motion.
Believe that when I see it.
You've been in this process now for months, uh, you and your team. Is there anything that you have identified that could potentially be a problem in the future, whether it's personnel issues or computer issues or software issues that have not been brought to the Board of Supervisors' attention or this school board's attention?
I think couple things there. Uh, first off is having more in-depth training on R D A coupled with the robust policies and procedures document that the, the board is requesting. I think that will go a long way towards um alleviating some of the historic financial reporting weaknesses that have existed. I think that aligning the roles and permissions that we described earlier and getting those straightened out inside of R D A and making sure folks know when I input, it gets routed to this person for approval. And then once that gets approved by that person, it comes to the Finance Director for approval. I think once that gets straightened out, um, I think that that will help a lot. I also think that the scrutiny that the superintendent is exerting on all spending and that this board is exerting on spending through your oversight, I think that is going to help turn the culture. I think if you take those three things together, um, we should not be having uh this conversation like this next year.
So true to my word, I have no more questions. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the second quarter appropriations as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote.
Hi.
Motion passes.
I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to, you know, thank the superintendent for her leadership for all this. She's asked a lot of very hard and tough questions. The county administration has been very supportive as we have asked a lot of questions about functionality in R D A, as has the Treasurer's Office. And I, I wanna make sure, cause I know that um anytime there are things that cross along entity lines like that between the Treasurer's Office, the, the county and the school board, uh, things can get a little bit muddied. Um, but uh, the, the folks at the county administration and folks at the Treasurer's Office have been extraordinarily supportive as we have tried to um begin the process of remediating these historical issues that the, the schools have faced. I just wanna make sure I, I said that. And again, I appreciate this board's time and attention. I owe you policy doc by Friday. I owe you a how-to document uh within the next couple of weeks and I'll be back um as often as you need.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
If I might, I would love to invite up our Administrator of Operations and Maintenance who wanted to address the board regarding uh a bid that we had um for the well project, for the well abandonment that we know is upcoming in March. Before he begins, I wanna thank Mister Hardcastle because this process has been very, very difficult um for us to be able to get information in the door to figure out what we're looking at. And he has worked endlessly and tirelessly since he began with us.
Welcome.
Hello. Sorry, that was kinda loud.
You're fine.
Hello, thank you all for having me. I just wanted to give a quick update and if I could pass along a proposal that we received from one of our uh bidders for a preliminary project to begin the establishment of, number one, going through the process of how we approach the current situation that we have with our water well system here in our district. So number one, the current project as I see it is we have a well that needs to be abandoned by March first, twenty twenty-six. That is, from what I can, let me raise this a little bit. From what I can see, um, that would be the elementary school well, um, because we have a well that supports our middle school and our high school here. So if we could go through that process of abandoning the elementary school well, that would give us two options then after that. We could, number one, tie all three schools together with one well or we could dig a new well. Um, I would like to go through the process of exploring the former option, which is tying all three schools together and like I uh have provided in this PowerPoint here, the which requires all non-community wells to meet peak demands. And by peak demands, I mean peak demand water usage daily. And it is possible to combine the wells if this um demand is met. So I have received a quote from Stan Tech Consultants that is one of the companies that I have reached out to, among others, to begin this preliminary project. And uh, that's gonna be at your top left. The quote is for twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-two to be exact. The deadline for our approval is the eighteenth of this month and that project is as follows. Number one, they would have to install a transducer. That transducer is simply a water level monitor. They can go in and they receive data about how much water is being used daily, peak demands, and they are able to condense that information and just monitor it over the next couple of weeks after it's installed. After they would do that, they would send an engineer to the property to do more of like a site evaluation to see exactly what our well system looks like, the pipes, and how the water is actually moving in between the schools. They would also see if the schools are already connected because that determination has not been made yet. Now, after that is done, then they would make their final determination on whether or not the three schools could be supported by a well that is essentially supporting all three of the schools together. This determination would give us our recommendation on whether or not we need to, number one, have this this project continue into actually tying the schools together. Or if it is determined that we can't support all three schools on one well, then we would have to go through the process of digging another well, which again, would need to be done by March first as we need to have that elementary school well abandoned. Now, that quote that I have for you guys here, the twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars, that is simply written down here. It is not for anything else. They are not doing anything else and is a preliminary project. It does not involve um, the process of going through actually digging another well if that is the determination that they make. So I have brought that to you for you denial. Um, I can make my own recommendation if it, it was necessary. Um, I'd like to leave that to the, to the side. Uh, the second company I'd like to talk about is Power and Fuel. They are the company that initially installed our, initially installed our wells. And uh, the owner, Derek Atkins, is actually on campus working at the elementary school right now on their um on their sewage system. So he actually stated to me verbally, I don't have a formal quote yet, that they, after I discussed with him, the Stan Tech proposal, could do that exact same project for less money. So I am in the process of receiving a quote from him on that. And um that's also, if you would like my opinion on that, you could also ask me as well. Uh, the last company, Waterwell Solutions, they, my initial contact as I was received, as I received this project and they initially recommended Stan Tech, which is why I went on to them next. I'm continuing for a quote from them as well. Um, and at this point, if the board has any questions, I would love to answer them.
Yeah, I, I have, sorry, I have a question. So the, the first quote's for twenty-two thousand two hundred, uh, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, you have a second quote coming. Um, the project is required to be done by March. Um, if we don't approve this at this meeting, then it's gonna be October before you can get those boards' approval. I don't know how the board feels about.
That, one of my main questions was if there was a timeframe given within those proposals of when that job could be completed.
The job for, the job from Stan Tech, the project from Stan Tech, if we approve, they gave me a timeline of six weeks to complete that project.
Six weeks to start.
Six weeks to have that determination completed on whether or not we need to combine the schools if it's possible or go through the process of building a completely new well.
So six weeks, so if, if we gave you the approval to do, choose one or the other tonight, you have until the eighteenth, I think it was, um, to make that decision. And then um, we go six weeks from then, so we're looking at November first. So that we're looking at November, December, January, February, March, it's supposed to be done. Um, I don't feel confident that we're gonna be done in that time because we're gonna have to put it out to bid and that, that process is very cumbersome. I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but if we don't have the well done, what happens?
If we don't have the well done, um, I do believe we I do believe we would have to go through the process of abandoning it anyway. I actually don't know exactly how that works when we would still need that well to function for our schools to function.
So we, if we abandon the will and, the, the well in March, how do we get water to the schools?
Right, and my answer to that question, um, I would need to do more research and I can obviously have that information provided very, very soon. The, my focus in this project has been to put all of my energy into determining if we can combine the, the schools for one well. Now, with that being said, um, Power and Fuel, the second company, they, like I said, initially built the well and the owner Derek, who's on the property now, I've been consulting with him daily on a lot of these things. He has a solid three, two to three plans on how he can do this. And I believe, based on what he's saying, based on what Mike and Lee on the maintenance department are saying, I believe that it would be very possible for us to combine these three schools. Now, with that being said, if it turns out that it is not, the information on whether or not we would have to abandon the well anyway, and then the question of how will we get water to our schools is a question that we would have to answer. And that answer is out there, we would have to find it. And I want to tell you that I know, but I don't.
So is um Derek, I think that was the name, um, is, is Derek certified engineer to be able to give the proposal as outlined?
Yes, he is.
Okay, good. And then are they able to tell you what needs to be done for the wells? And then are they able to give you an estimated cost? are they able to give you an estimated cost at that time as to whether, you know, it's going to be, we can combine the three wells and it's going to be, you know, $800 billion or whatever, you know? Are they going to be able to give us a rough set, rough estimate where we are? Because this has been going on for a while, from what I understand. And we're down to the last minute. So I just want to know what we're getting ourselves into is not only the school, but as the county.
Absolutely. They would be able to provide that information.
Okay, great.
Don't look at me. I do have something to say. Is it okay, Madam Chair?
Yep, you go right ahead.
Since we're in a critical timeframe, in within a critical timeframe at this point, your recommendation as our director of maintenance would be what?
My recommendation would be that we go with Power and Fuel. They initially installed the wells. We have very time, timely con, we have a long established relationship with the owner of this company. They've kept in contact with each other throughout the years. He knows the wells inside and out. Like I said, he's the owner of the company who put the wells together. He still remembers a lot of details from the wells that even our two maintenance guys don't remember. I've been in contact with them numerous times throughout the last couple of weeks and I don't take the recommendations that he gives me as the ones that we're just going to go with. I want to see it on paper first, obviously, so it can be presented to you all here. But he's given me two solid recommendations that I've gone over with two other, our two members in our maintenance department, Mike and Lee, and they're both water well math, water well math certified, excuse me, water math certified, to be able to kind of understand some of the physics and some of the math that goes behind some of these equations. And they're very positive that these 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 projects can be done. And I do believe that this is going to be our best way forward, if I'm being honest.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, I would lean to the recommendation of our director and wait on your getting the estimates. And that hopefully everything can be done in a timely fashion so that March comes and we still have water running through these buildings. So thank you for for what you've presented.
Thank you. Yes. And if need be, if we have to have a special meeting called for that vote, that's no problem. We'll make that happen. Yes.
I'm glad you mentioned that. I was going to ask if that's possible.
Yeah, so like to interject that Mr. Hardcastle has really been working hard to get this data in. It's just been very challenging as we saw previously with getting it in the door. Just the nature of the beast. I just want to put it out.
Can I add something? The 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 biggest difficulty that I've noticed is that a lot of these companies want us to pay them before they come to the property. One of the reasons why I'm recommending Power and Fuel is because he's not asking us to pay him before he comes to the property and takes a look at our at our facilities that we have here. I think that's very valuable. I think that based on the time constraint that we have, we need something like that.
Well, let me just say that we appreciate, this is a very complicated thing. If it wasn't complicated, we wouldn't need engineers to come in. We could figure it out on our own. It's not like digging a hole in your backyard. So I appreciate all the work that you did. I'm sure you had a learning curve on this and and that's really important. So I just want to stress to you the second that you make a decision on where you want to go, I'm sure this board will will support you in that endeavor. But you have to let the superintendent know immediately, this is the way where I want to go. This is the reason why. So that this board isn't the delay here. So we will meet and make sure that we vote on this as soon as you have it together. So if you have it together in three days, just let us know. And this board will not be the delay for that. So we're all giving you our work. Okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure all the directors want to run up and read their reports, but I see a lot of no's. So unless there are any questions, all of the reports are are available online.
Yeah, they are made available to the public. So anyone in the audience online, they can look those reports up on our board docs. All right. So then we're going to move on down to the next section. That's an action item on permission to fund school bus purchases. Do you want to go to that?
Sure. So this is mine and it will be pretty quick. Basically, I am requesting from the board permission to present to the board of supervisors this Thursday for them to release some funds that were previously allocated for purchases of buses. The quick rundown is that we have 23 buses in service. We have only one backup bus. It does do a partial run. And we have one bus that is very close to being not usable. So we are very tight on transportation vehicles. As a quick snapshot, since 2015, I took a caption of 10 years. We have purchased only four new buses within that timeframe, one which was allocated as special education bus and two that were allocated for trip buses and not for route buses. If you go to the earmarked funds, that would be great. So my understanding is that there were funds earmarked or allocated from, not allocated, but earmarked by the county for the purchase of buses. Some years ago, there was $200,000 earmarked at that time for purchase of buses. The initial request, as I understand it, was for two discrete new buses. Unfortunately, by the time the purchase was made, one of those buses was somewhat higher, I believe, $126,000. So two bus purchases could not be made at that point. However, it would leave approximately $74,000 that was still earmarked for buses. So I would like to request with my last slide, I have four quotes here. I would like to be able to go to the board of supervisors to request access to those funds to purchase two used buses. I did receive quotes from four different vendors. Actually, I cannot take credit for that. The director of transportation and the garage, the person who leads the garage, Donnie, was hugely helpful in getting these together. As Mr. Hardcastle, I would like to make the recommendation, as you can see, the prices are here. Many of those prices are in excess of the funds that we have available. So for that reason, as well as other reasons, I would like to request that we go with quote one. Also, because Sunny Marion is a vendor that we use, they are local. They do provide a lot of technical support to us and there's no delivery fee. So that would be us requesting for them to release $52,000 of that earmarked funding to get at least two used buses. I do have the stats listed here as well for each of the buses in case you're interested.
Thank you, Dr. Leslie. So I'd like to make a motion to request to approve the request to release the funds on purchasing the buses going with quote one in the presentation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote? All right. Thank you so much for doing all that hard work and getting us some buses. All right, we're moving on to our open public comments. Do we have any in-person comments signed up on the sheet? In-person comments, you'll have to sign up on the sheet in the auditorium entrance. Each speaker will have three minutes for their public comment period. And we're checking that sheet now. And we don't have any public, in-person public comments. Online, do we have anyone online for public comments? If you are online, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine and we will retrieve you to make your public comments online. If you are online, you have three minutes for your public comment. Do we have anyone, Mr. Bass? We do not. Okay. So we can move on. Any board member comments other than what we've already discussed? No? All right. And so we're moving on. I make a motion that we adjourn at 7:02 this evening. Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.